The old one?
Yeah, whatever.
And then there was the intermediate one where you guys changed it before I changed it.
Yeah, it was fire truck before.
Hey Alan.
How are you Mike? Did you ever call that guy back up about that Canton Nelson meeting on the fourth?
That's a recreation. It's nothing to do with management as far as recreation. It isn't, it isn't, the deal we're going to on Friday is the planned, the government agenda. Probably have two several meetings and of course laying a footload before as I stand if we need to be managing that forest like the Southern California Edison and Mountain Home and the areas. I mean let's do some, a little bit of everything. They're still looking at it, I don't know whether they're gonna, they said they would, they'd let me know if they used my statements I made in the plan. But I think they just need, they need to get all these done by Friday, so they're gonna take them up there and show them and get this done now.
I don't know, I told Alan, I told you, I didn't tell Pete.
Yeah, I told him to go on there. Did he?
Hey, how you doing?
Wow. You see that? Withdrawing the appeal?
Oh, they went through the thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they just did the presentation.
Good morning, welcome to the June 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reminder to all those as well as myself to turn your phones, pagers on vibrate or silent, which I just did. Our first, we have no presentations this morning. Our first item of business is public comment. This time members of the public wishing to address the board on an item not on today's agenda may address the board. We'll limit the public comment period to 15 minutes and three minutes for each speaker. I have no request to speak before the public, but if there is anybody that would like to speak, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. I see someone pointing towards the mic, go ahead. You can use either one. You, you can step forward and then hand that to our clerk. That's fine, you can just state your name, you don't have to fill out, you can state your, your address for the record as well.
Oh, okay. Good morning, my name is Lorena Vera and I'm gonna be talking a little bit about the health, health plan for the IHSS program that I'm involved.
And your address, please?
I live in Sultana, California.
That's efficient, clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Lorena Vera and I live in Sultana, California and I'm a home care provider in Teleri County. And I want to tell you that as far as the health plan goes, as well, we have ever, all we have ever asked for is for the best health plan that is available for the 60 cents per hour that the state makes available to the Teleri County. As long as it keeps being the policy for the Teleri County IHSS to operate on a budget that is less than half of the dollars that are available, we won't ever have any real healthcare coverage. The full 60 cents per hour from the state that would provide, would provide more than 1.3 million dollars for the quality health plan for the IHS providers who care for our elderly and disabled community. But the plan that is being provided, that is being shown to us pays $600 per day. If, if, if the, if we go to the hospital and, and if we go to the hospital, it only pays 20% if we need anesthesia. Even in this climate and the mess in the state, the 60 cents per hour for the health benefits is still available from the state. There is the ability to provide a health plan that provides real healthcare coverage to the IHS providers that desperately need it so they can continue care for the seniors and disabled people in the Teleri County. Even the county workers that make for far more than nine dollars per hour that we make now would have difficulty paying more than $2,000 per day in out-of-pocket costs if they went in the hospital. How are we ever going to be able to pay for this? Please, please, don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth Vera and I live in Sultana, California, Road 105, 41772 Apartment D. I am a home care provider in the Teleri County. I would like to tell you, no one knows what's going to happen with the state budget. Until now. Please consider keeping it this way until we know what we're, what, what really will happen to the state budget. There has been some proposals that are terrible. That will severely harm the quality in the care in the Teleri County for the seniors and the disabilities. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rosa Soltani, I live in Visalia, California. And I am a home care provider in Teleri County. I am here to say to you that when considering any proposed cuts for income home support services providers, please remember that these are cuts for care providers in Teleri County that have very limited benefits if any. Unlike the county employees, we get no vacation time, no sick time, no pensions. The only thing we have is that major wage that we are receiving. It could be devastating to us as care providers and to the IHSS consumers that rely on us if you keep cutting IHSS even more. It would be very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and bring that back to the Board of Supervisors. We do have Board of Supervisors matters. Supervisor Innes, is there anything you'd like to share with us today?
Friday we'll be having a meeting with the US Forest Service at the Porterville office on Newcombe to discuss the monument and the management for the forest. And we know this is a ongoing problem since we've only pulled about 5 million board feet a year out of those mountains and in the past, we used to pull 200 million board feet and you couldn't tell where it went. So it continues to be overgrown, continues to, to be a real fire, fire hazard. And also it's, it's not a watershed anymore, it is soaking all the water up. You got almost 1,000 trees in some places per acre. There's no way there's any water gonna be shed off of that. So that's what we're gonna be working on Friday is trying to come up with a plan that everybody can live with and hopefully get some management back in there. We also continue to work on the rail, east side rail with Kern and Teleri and Fresno Counties to hopefully get us a short haul rail on the east side and keep it so they won't abandon it. We really feel like that's our future. With almost 40% of the industries now requiring rail because of the high costs of, of energy and fuels, we feel like that is our future and could be the thing that draws industry to the east side of this valley. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Sheeda.
We just received an email that Lake Success and Quia will be receiving stimulus funds to make some significant improvements in the infrastructure that they have up there for the public, so that's good news. I know that, that's it.
Okay, Supervisor Worley.
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
I've got nothing this morning either.
Well, quick, two quick things. They left, but our second speaker did state that this was a state issue and I'm glad that they brought that out and that we were dealing with the hand that we were dealt by the state. That leads me right into our next thing. Next Tuesday, our CEO, Mr. Russo, will present to the board an item on target budget amounts that he has presented to each of the departments in Teleri County, so there'll be a discussion about the budget. We will also have that exact same presentation made for the public at 7:00 PM in the evening on that same day here in the board chambers for those that are not able to attend a morning meeting. So we'll give an opportunity for folks to come in the evening that cannot attend in the morning. That will be from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM right here in the same presentation that he will be presenting to the board. There will be a time for question and answers as well. Okay, we'll move on now to our consent calendar. We do need to pull item number 27, not for separate consideration, just for clarification. The vendor name is actually Sierra Lifestyle Ambulance and I believe in here it just says Lifestyle Ambulance. So the correction is Sierra Lifestyle Ambulance. Are there any other items that need to be polled by the public? Supervisor?
I, I just have a question on item number 11, so I'd like to ask.
Okay, we'll pull item number 11 for separate consideration. Any other items that need to be polled, board?
Chairman, I just was looking and, just to clarify if I might, is anybody here on item number 30? I don't see anyone. That's just a setting a date, but I knew there might, there might be some folks who would be here this morning. I don't see anyone, so we'll, we'll leave it on the consent calendar as is.
Okay, any items need to be polled, board? Are there any members of the public that would like to pull a consent calendar item? So we'll pull consent calendar item number 11 for separate consideration. Item number 27 is corrected to read Sierra Lifestyle Ambulance. We'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would move approval of items as amended and omitting item 11. Second?
Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Innes. It's unanimous vote, we'll take item number 11 at this time. Supervisor Vanderpool?
I just had a question on item number 11, which deals with the approval of newer amended conflict of interest codes. In the very last line, it said that a few local agencies have failed to respond to outreach. Is there a need to contact and get a response from those agencies before we act? Or is it okay to do so without their response?
You can, you can address this matter before you today. The outreach is usually done through the clerk's office. I think we work together to try and get those people that haven't responded and hopefully eventually we will get a response and bring a separate item before you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion then.
I move approval.
Moved by Vanderpool.
Second.
Second by Innes. It's unanimous, thank you very much. We'll now move to our untimed items. Number 35 is a request from Board of Supervisors to establish a procedure while appointing at-large members of the Teleri County Planning Commission. Mr. Chernobayev.
Good morning Chairman Cox, Board Jed Chernobayev, Board of Supervisor staff. The agenda item before you comes upon the request of the Chairman of the Board. Currently, there is a vacancy on the seven-member Flory County Planning Commission. The current selection process is as follows. Five members of the Planning Commission are appointed upon the recommendation of each district supervisor. Each recommendation is district-specific. The recommendation is then brought before the board for approval. The other two planning commission positions are at-large. Under the current process, the Board of Supervisors Chairman recommends at-large positions to the board for approval. In December of 2008, Charlie Patrick, who served in an at-large position, retired from the Planning Commission. Upon retirement, the application process for the vacant at-large position was open. While reviewing the applications for the vacant position, Chairman Cox asked that the process for appointment be reviewed and discussed. The options for creating a new policy to appoint the at-large members of the Planning Commission are, one, leave the policy as is and have the Chairman recommend, recommend the at-large member for Board of Supervisor approval. Two, create an ad hoc subcommittee of two members of the Board of Supervisors. And three, other procedures as recommended by the board members.
Okay, thank you. I think each of you as well has a list in front of you of how other counties handle the, the appointment. Most, it appears, do not have at-large positions, they're five members. And the remainder, it looks as though they're either done the way we do it, where the Chair recommends it to the board in whole, or each supervisor makes a recommendation and the board chair approves. I just brought this up to the boards, to bring it to the board's attention, to see if the board was happy with the policy the way it is or if we wanted to make any type of modifications to the policy.
Chairman Cox, I would suggest that we have the Chair and the Vice Chair interview the candidates and make a recommendation to the full board.
Comments?
I think that, that would be, that's a good idea.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Chair and Vice Chair interview the at-large candidates and make a recommendation, selection recommendation to the board.
And then the board will make the final approval.
Then the board will have the final approval.
Moved by Sheeda, second by Innes. It's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Chernobayev. I know you put a lot of work into checking out the other planning commissions. We'll now move to item number 37, presentation by Russo, are you going to be doing this or?
Actually, Ms. Grunwald is gonna be doing this.
Oh, well, it says 36 on my page, I just said 37.
We are, we are proposing that you adopt administrative regulation 37, so that explains the confusion. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
That's what happens when you're dyslexic, huh?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Barbara Grunwald, Deputy County Counsel. I'm here before you on an item to approve a new administrative regulation that does four different things. The first thing that it does, working backwards in the actual text of, of the proposed regulation, there's a new state regulation on handing out passes and tickets that requires the public agency to adopt a policy. So we're adopting a policy to conform to that new state regulation. At the same time, there's another new state regulation on receiving certain donations to the county in such a way that they don't have to be reported as gifts to the individual officials who will end up using those gifts. And that was confusing people because it requires filling out a form and county staff were getting to think that they had to fill out that form for regular donations to the county. So what we're also doing is incorporating into this new policy and updating the existing rules on general donations to the county and explaining that those rules are not the same as the rules for these special gifts that have to be used by individuals. And it was also a good opportunity to put in a paragraph about the interrelationship between the friends of Teleri County and, and the county.
Thank you. I would like to make the statement, as I first read this, it made it sound as though this board was accepting tickets to the Lakers game and not reporting them, that is not so. Why knowledge, I don't think we've ever accepted a ticket to any game.
As a, oh, and Supervisor Worley would like, well, to game nine of the NBA playoffs, would that be all right?
Any other questions of staff? Board? Any questions from the public in regards to this item? Seeing none, we will bring this back to the board for consideration.
Chairman, I move approval of staff recommendation.
I would second that.
Moved by Worley, second by Vanderpool. Cast your votes. It's unanimous, thank you very much. We do have a 9:30 timed item. Seeing that it is not yet 9:30, we're going to adjourn to closed session and take care of some of our items that might be handled quickly. I apologize for catching you off guard, Madam Counsel.
That's okay, Mr. Chairman, on your board's regular and addendum agendas, we have items A through, or backwards, R, S.
So we will adjourn to closed session, we will be back close to the 9:30 hour. Actually sounds like we had more fun than we really did have. Okay, we are back in open session. It is 9:30 and we will now take up item number three and fill, an appeal filed by Jan Con of Con Sorison Conway for Mike Ribero for special use permit PSP 05060. Good morning.
Good morning Supervisors, Chairman Cox, Jason Laboue, Planner 3, Resource Management Agency. The item before you today is the appeal of the FM Jersey project for a new dairy located near Tipton. The appellant has filed a letter of withdrawal yesterday afternoon and your board has been supplied copies of that. I have additional copies here too for the clerk. And this project was previously heard before the Planning Commission on March 11th, 2009 and subsequently, resolutions 8427 of the Planning Commission certified the final environmental impact report and adopted mitigation, the, adopted a mitigation monitoring plan and a statement of overriding considerations in compliance with SEQA. And as well, the Planning Commission Resolution Number 8428 approved the FM Jersey's dairy special use permit, 05060, tentatively. Staff is requesting today that you hold the public hearing and deny the appeal and uphold those resolutions for the Planning Commission and direct staff to file a, a new notice of determination. And additional request is to have staff bring back a resolution for your board at a future board meeting to be determined that would have a resolution basically stating the same findings that was, that the Planning Commission came about with Resolutions 8427 to 8428.
One thing I did not hear would be to accept the withdrawal of the appeal as well. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, we did leave the public hearing open last time we heard this, so the public hearing is open. Anybody that would like to address the board on this issue, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. We'll bring this back to the board for further discussion or action.
Chairman, in light of the withdrawal by the appellant, it would be my request that we approve the Planning Department and the Planning Commission's decision. My understanding is we have to make our own independent findings, so I would request this matter be moved, I would move to accept the withdrawal of the appeal and instruct the, our staff to bring back findings that, at a later date, at which time we would take action to support the Planning Commission.
And before we second that, I do need to disclose publicly that I was contacted by a family member of the appellant and I did explain the process of the, the public hearing and what, what needed to be done or what could be done in the public hearing in order to bring, bring and make public any issues that they had with the procedure that was followed. So I just need to disclose that. And I also told them that any decision that I made would be made based on the information presented here at the public hearing and that I would not give any further information at that time, so.
So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
By Supervisor Worley, a second by Supervisor Innes. Cast your votes. It's unanimous, thank you, board. We will now re-adjourn back into closed session for items that were not discussed, Madam Counsel.
Yes, sir, they remain items A through S is on your board's closed session agenda.
and addendum and I do anticipate an announcement.
We do anticipate an announcement out. Thank you very much for attending today and will adjourn to closed session.
H, it's H, I, and K. Announcement out of closed session for Tulare County Board of Supervisors today, June 16th, 2009. In the matter of item H, Rivera versus County of Tulare et al., Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 09232706, the Board voted to provide, to defend the matter and further to provide a defense with a reservation of rights to individual employee defendants on motion of Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Ashida. On a 4-0 vote, Supervisor Vanderpool being absent. The matter of item I, Billigran versus County of Tulare et al., Tulare County Superior Court Case Number 08229399, the Board voted to defend the matter and to defend individual employee defendants with a reservation of rights. Motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Innes. On a 4-0 vote, Supervisor Vanderpool being absent. The matter of item K on the Board's closed session agenda, Young versus City of Visalia et al., United States District Court Case Number 109CV00115AWI-GSA. The Board voted to provide a defense in this matter and further to defend individual employee defendants with a reservation of rights. This was on the motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Innes. On a 5-0 vote, Supervisor Vanderpool was present for that vote. There are no other announcements.